Get started. Officially call the meeting to order for December 9, 2021. Start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, flag is to my left. Pledge allegiance. To the flag, United States of America, to the Republic, which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and right. All right, just so everybody is aware, this meeting is being recorded. If anybody else is recording, please let us know. I'm gonna start with entertaining motion to approve the minutes of November 18th meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Sheedy is also a yes. We'll be on to the next item, warrants, Mrs. Cohen.
I reviewed and approved the following warrants, school expense warrants on November 18th, 2021, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. December 1st, 2021, one million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-three cents. School payroll warrants, November 18th, 2021, one million, seventy-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. And December 2nd, 2021, one million, sixty thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and forty-nine cents, which extends them into public practice.
Thank you, Mrs. Cohen. Next item is the student representative updates, Zoe and Malia.
Hi, so we're gonna start with the LGN. They said that they have a few fun things going on at the LGN for the holidays. They'll be participating in Spirit Week, the week of December 20th, designed for students and staff participation. Monday, they each have like a different winter theme, so Monday is baby, it's cold outside, so you wear your favorite winter sweater, socks, or scarves. Tuesday is deck the hallways, they show off their best holiday bling. Wednesday is winter wonderland, so if you're hoping for snow, you wear white. Thursday is a long winter's nap, and you prepare for winter break in your best PJs. Additionally, classrooms are holding special events, like relating to Christmas, but just still learning. They're doing STEAM activities, challenge to build an elf trap. They'll be participating in math, reading, and writing around the Grinch, and they're going to be watching movies for Christmas, and Zoe's going to be doing the JCS.
Yeah, so for the JCS, they're also having a spirit week. Each third grade class is actually gonna be doing a caroling event for all the other classes. Little Lancers will be having the Polar Express visit, and Kether One will also be doing the same thing. And as a celebration of what makes them all uniquely special within the community, the EL students have posted a giant display of their family heritage, and one of the spirit days will be where your favorite holiday. So that's kind of cool how they are incorporating all different sorts of cultures and all of that. They're also excited to announce that they were super excited to receive the grant to design the sea creature-filled ocean-themed 100-foot-long mural across the whole cafeteria. So they're excited to see how that'll come out, and they have a local artist coming in to work with the students and staffs to do that. So I'm excited to see how that will be. Malia's gonna talk about the Yell and what they're doing.
So next week and the final week before vacation are also holiday spirit days for the Yell. They're going to be asked to wear crazy socks, crazy hair, dress up as superheroes or holiday characters. Their homeroom color, kind of like the high school, we do class colors too, and just yell spirit day, just to name a few of them. They have a trait of the month, and this month it is integrity, and so students are being asked to point out what great actions they're doing for integrity. They can be selected to win prizes in the main office raffle each day, the more, you know, activities they participate in, which is really cute. And they have the chance to try and fill up their bucket for their traits for each month, and so the students are rewarded when they do that. And Zoe's gonna take on the high school.
Yep, so lots of things going on at the high school. Winter sports have just started first games this weekend, so a lot of people are excited to see that. But also, the band and chorus winter concert is coming up on December 16th at 6:00. And we also had lots of fundraisers going on around school for different clubs and activities. So Student Council did the Santa Fund Drive for donations, and we raised almost $700 for the Adderboro Council for Christmas, for Children's Christmas, is for kids charity. Sorry, and then for Math Honor Society, we had a toy drive at the Yell this past weekend, and it was with the Norton Police Department and the C2 Foundation, and that was a really good success, even though it was pretty cold outside. The National Art Honor Society sold over 200 snowmen ornaments as a fundraiser also. And the National Business Honor Society are coming out nice and strong with the brand-new Honor Society, but they just sold raffle tickets for holiday gift baskets. So lots been going on. I think since this was the last one, just for this year, we just did kind of like a holiday update, what's kind of going on. But we'll definitely try to do some new kind of student opinions on different things, just not much has been happening to ask what's been going on. We don't have any live streaming to complain about anymore, so we'll see what happens next year and what we can get from the students in different schools, but unless Malia has anything else, I think I'm good.
Yeah, I think we're all set. Thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, girls.
Thanks, girls. All right, the next item on our agenda is a presentation from the Need Association. Come on up. Come on up.
Hi. Hi, I'm Sandy Butchery, part of Need. Hello, and thank you for having us here tonight. We are Norton Bracing Educational Development for Need, a volunteer nonprofit organization fundraises throughout the year to enhance curriculum and support teachers in Norton by providing a teacher grant program. Since Need began, we had the honor of giving over $168,000 to teachers and staff to the Norton Public Schools. This year alone, we were able to grant $9,552.26 to help fund nine exciting grants that enhance the curriculum for our students. This year, we're excited to have some of the teachers here in the room to speak about their grant, and I'd love to invite them up to join us and maybe state your name, where you teach, and what your grant is all about.
Okay, first, I'm Susan Caston. I teach at the Henry I Yell School, and I also teach at the LGN School. I received a grant this year, we're working on enforcing and trying to up our STEAM program. It used to be technology, but at the elementary level, we changed it to STEAM programs, and this is our first year working on STEAM program. And I wrote a grant for a Lego essentials kit, or 12 kits, so they are little boxes of there's the little software that goes with it, and motors where they can do a challenge and make something move, so it's all integrated into the curriculum and science and social sciences. So I haven't gotten them yet, I'm really excited to see them, I could talk more about them, but Hathan and I look forward to telling you more about them at the end of the year.
We'll bring you back. Yeah, we'll bring you back.
So are many kids able to use the same Legos? Or is it just specific kids that are in the group that are using them?
So we have a way to like clean them with the
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm just wondering if it's open to like all kids, or how does that work?
So we're gonna just do it in fourth and fifth grade this year. We would have to get an additional grant for the lower elementary, we decided to try it.
So all fourth and fifth graders will be exposed to it, to be able to try it? Okay, that's what I was getting at. Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Kendall, and I teach kindergarten at JCS.
I'm Amanda Weena.
I'm Kendra Lenny.
Megan Norris. So as a kindergarten team, we applied for a STEM grant also. Within the grant, we applied for materials that can be used in STEM-related fine motor bins, and we can also use them for hands-on activities and experiments. And we also requested B-Box, which introduced students to basic programming, and they can be also integrated into math and literacy instruction. And we wanted to go with STEM because we've been doing a lot more STEM-related activities in the classroom, and they seem to be particularly motivating and engaging for our students. They allow for more exploration and also communication. We've been putting them in groups more, and they've been really having to communicate and figure things out together and just cooperate with each other, which is really nice, so we're very excited. It's awesome.
Great.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessica Holger. I teach here at the middle school. I teach in our language-based program. So my grant is for whiteboard desks for my classroom. So it's a specialized program, it's a smaller classroom, so I applied for eight whiteboard desks that my students can use. I primarily teach math to the program. So the whiteboard desks, we're using whiteboards just all the time in math. It gives kids more space to work on, and they just somehow like it better than pencil and paper. So the whiteboard desks will just be more space, less materials, and I'm excited because they're better than our regular, better for my students than our regular desks because it makes it so easy for them to use our flexible seating options that we already have. So the desks themselves, I think, are going to be great, and then the fact that they have a whiteboard on top of them is amazing, so I'm really excited to get them and try to start using them.
I'm gonna be using them during negotiations because we use your room.
I know you do, I noticed my stuff moved around once or twice. Thank you.
We did utilize your flexible seating last week.
Hi, I'm Kim Bray. I teach French at the high school. Joe Robleski, Heather Triani, and I together applied for a grant to purchase novels, bookmaking supplies, and shelving for books. We'll be using these novels to increase literacy and proficiency in both the high school and the middle school, French and Spanish students. They'll be using, they'll have the opportunity to use these books for independent free-choice reading, for creating class stories, and it will allow us to expand our libraries. Students in the middle school have already started creating stories that will go into book format once the supplies come in, and the high school students will have the opportunity to interact with novels of greater difficulty and variety than what we have right now, so thank you very much. I'm excited to start.
Hi, everybody. Dr. Marcus, Principal over at JCS, and I'm excited that we received the grant from Need for a giant mural, as Zoe talked about, 106 feet long, all across the cafeteria that will celebrate our ocean game and celebrate the community. And I really want to thank Need for their support. It's a wonderful organization. We're very glad to have it. I've been in a few other places that don't have an organization like Need, and so I think Norton is a great place, and we're very glad to have it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeanine Heaney, and I'm the treasurer of Need, and I'm just gonna let you know about some of the grants for recipients who were unable to come tonight. At the high school, Del Hall was granted a WiCon tablet that will enhance math curriculum and streamline the way she's able to teach, effectively utilizing technology to assist in projecting math on the board for more interactive experience with her students. This should be a pilot program, I think, as well. At the middle school level, Megan Pistano was granted a wide array of flexible seating to help students in her special education classroom be more able to focus and comfortably learn. Also, at the elementary level, Emily Ducharme was granted a variety of materials for multi-sensory rooms at both the JCS and the LGN School that included games, flexible seating, tactile materials, and more. We appreciate the teachers who came. We appreciate your time. I also want to mention that Need came up with the $9,500 for these grants, but it's really important to also note that $9,300 in addition was given from a variety of sources, the Mass Cultural Council, the parent boards at the JCS, the LG, and the middle school as well, in the help Henry Yell School. So we appreciate your support, well, made it a lot further. We also want to thank the town of Norton for their support of our fundraisers throughout the year, with our seniors closing drives, painting ends on driveways around town, auctions in the spring, and any other wacky fundraiser we come up with. It's a support and success of those fundraisers that means granting wishes at Norton Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman, to Need. I mean, it's kind of like just crazy how they do this.
Yeah.
I'm like, oh, it's, I mean, I appreciate the time and the effort for the fundraising, the work and the dedication to provide the money, and then of course, to the staff, thank you for taking the time to go after it, to try to do something for our kids that maybe is a pilot on day one, and maybe eventually just becomes part of the curriculum within the district, so thank you so much. Appreciate it. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's great, you know, Norton needs a great program. I think the best thing is our teachers embrace it, to think outside of their normal methods, so I think that's the best part.
That's the best part.
Thank you for, everybody for coming.
Thank you, guys.
All right, our next agenda item is some cheerleaders are doing good, and they want to go take a trip to Nationals. So Ms. Burkett and Ms. Morse, feel free to explain all this to us.
You guys should have come in like with the whole cheer going off. Right, like show us something.
It's like a warm-up. Can't pass up the opportunity to warm up.
You're gonna have to show us something.
They just came from practice, they should be.
Oh, see, you girls are ready.
Yes, so my name is Kimberhead. I am an English teacher at the high school, and I am the varsity head coach, and we just wrapped up. I'm in my sixth year coaching and my seventh year teaching.
My name's Bailey Morse. I am a ninth-grade wellness teacher at the high school. This is my first year coaching cheerleading. Love being back in the sport that I grew up with. I'm so proud of the athletes for how far they've come. And behind me, just for, you know, to tug on some heartstrings here, I have eight amazing high school student athletes who just finished the most successful season we've ever had, so they're here to support us. We have a really quick slideshow, so quick. I can talk super fast. So to recap our fall 2021 season, we won the league. We won the Tri Valley League for the first time in TVL history. I believe the last time we won the league title was 2002, and it was like so shortly, so first time in TVL history. We won, and then we moved on to regionals. We competed against all the Division III teams in the South. We got third place, and we finished our season placing sixth in the state out of 19 teams. And just, yeah, top six in the state is very impressive. I think with the score that we had, we would have gotten 15th in the state, like just one year ago, so we are moving up. And we also have a competitive JV team that did amazing. They competed four times this season. They absolutely scored so high compared to previous JV scores, and so we have a total of 23 girls in the program that we are really, really proud of. That was a screenshot from when we told them that they earned a national qualified score because we did not expect it. We were a little sad, and then that's their authentic reaction to finding out they qualified. So objectives for why we are asking for permission to go to this Nationals trip, of course, it would be the first time. It helps strengthen and build the program, especially with our JV team making advances of their own, just setting a positive example and goal for the underclassmen to strive, and then of course, puts Norton in a leader position, not only in the TVL, but also I think throughout the state, and just representing our school, our town. So the national competition details, it's actually an international championship, but I'm not sure with COVID how that works, but it is an international championship. It takes place in Orlando, Florida. It would be March 18th to the 21st. And, oh, and it's called a marriage year, and so I know there are other local towns in Massachusetts going. This seems to be, we had an option of a couple different ones to choose from. This seems to be the most popular competition among the Massachusetts teams. And so the pricing right now, without any fundraising, just the basic cost would be $750, and that includes nearly everything aside from the flight meal, so it would include registration, admission into all the competition venues, the party afterwards, transportation to and from the hotel, a three-day pass to Universal, and then the flight would be separate. That, right now, is looking like $220. And then, once we get approval, we will hopefully be fundraising a lot to cover the costs for our athletes. The chaperones that would be attending would be myself, Ms. Morse, the assistant coach, and then another assistant coach, we have Jacqueline Demshack, and then I listed our athletes. So we would be taking our fall team, a varsity team that earned their bid to Nationals, however, at this time, I believe two athletes are not able to go, and so in that case, we would be pulling up members from our winter varsity team to compete in their spot. So I think we're looking at 12 athletes and students total, and three chaperones.
Any other questions?
No, besides, I'm super proud of you girls. I mean, that is awesome. I mean, going from last year to what, you know, your poor kids had to endure to this is phenomenal. You guys have a lot to be proud of, and we're super proud of you as well, and of our coaches as well. I mean, it takes a lot of effort, and it's just awesome. Really happy for you girls. Bring it home now.
So I do want to share a story to the committee and Dr. Ben. I emailed Ms. Burkett and Ms. Morse, because a very good friend of mine has a daughter that cheers for a neighboring district, my hometown, and she was super impressed by the squad. You ended up placing higher than that, but she felt the need to show me a text, and I felt the need to say ha-ha. Because I've lived here longer than my hometown, so now I can say I'm from Norton. So I think that's great that you're getting recognized by our competitors, as what Ms. Cohen said, it's, you know, it's time to get to that next level. So hopefully, you know, you girls can crush it at Nationals as well.
So I think it's really important for the committee to recognize the commitment that cheerleading is important. So, and I'll, you know, correct me if I'm wrong.
I believe some of our juniors are more than that.
Correct, you know, involved with other programs outside of NPS, but still, you have the benefit of that, right? But these young ladies and their coaches are not only competing mostly on weekends, because that's how I get my information, but they're also supporting our Norton football program. So, you know, that's X number of games, then giving up a Saturday or Sunday, all of the practices that go with it. It's a longer season than I think the public may think, which is Friday night football, and that's all that happens. It's not. It's beyond that, and thanks to these young ladies as coaches, and there's three of them, if I remember correctly. I'm gonna suggest that the chaperones be paid for by Norton Public Schools solely for two reasons. Number one, because they are employees of the district. Number two, I want to make sure that in terms of liability, that the liability of the coaches is that they are acting on behalf of Norton Public Schools and going out and supporting this, and we've done this before in a track situation that took place a few years ago. We tried to do something to support the coaches only because, and I'd love to support all the students that pay for it, I really would. But it's a way to make sure that all of those Xs and Ys around Kim and company being responsible for the activities, being responsible for the care of these young ladies while they're representing us, so I'll be working with that with the coaches over the next few weeks as we, you guys prep all of your stuff. And I'm supporting the recommendation provided to you that this team will travel and compete on behalf of Norton High School and NPS, and just do well, have some fun. If there's anything in today's world, as Ms. Cohen said, coming from what we've been through and trying to get through it, I think is really, really important, so that's my recommendation to the community, support, we obviously travel, which is required by law that you hold on.
Just one more thing, if you ever need any extra practice, feel free to come to a hockey game and cheer on the hockey guys. We would love it.
Listen, we've, yeah, we've done that in the past. We can bring that back for sure. We have our first basketball game tomorrow night.
Yeah, our first game is Saturday night, because I grew up in Plymouth, and we always had cheerleaders for our hockey team, so.
We did my first year in the winter season. I came in strong. We did cheer at a couple hockey games. I think we can bring it back.
Yeah, well, you let me know. It'd be great to see.
Right, ladies?
Man, what, you guys are cheering?
Where else do you want us to go? Where are you honest to go? We'll go anywhere.
Don't make me bust into an old cheer. I'll do it.
Please don't, please don't. Let's take the whole committee, let's take the whole. All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve the NHS Cheer Trip to Nationals, as it is written.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mrs. Stern?
Five, six, seven, eight, yes.
I sense the humor, I like it.
I'm just gonna say yes.
Mrs. Stern.
Hundred percent, yes, Sherry.
Mr. Sheedy is also a yes, hundred percent.
Awesome. Good luck, girls.
Coach, reach out whenever you think a timetable is of the species.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, the next agenda item is announcement of the 2022 Adams Scholarship.
Thank you. So earlier this morning, I actually cast out the scholarship recipients, their letter that comes from the state that gives them eight semesters of tuition. As you know, the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Program last year was a basically, you checked in if you wanted to do it, you were required to do it, if you will, like in other years because of everything to do with the MCAS the last eighteen months. So this is typically your top 25%, if you will, that can go, you're usually are getting it, so usually have like a bunch of lines. So we are going to, just gonna remind you that we're also going to potentially see more names in the sprint of students who decide to do this, but you have before you, as you know, the students who have two different options within the scores that they receive in each of these, and really proud of these students who decided to take the first option and actually take the assessment, so I congratulate Michael Collins, Isabella Dumont, Zoe Duran. Congratulations, Zoe, who's on with us tonight, Henry Eck, Justin Lego, Justin Morando, John Nyhale, and Catherine Powers, Jordan Robbins, Tristan Seboud, and Michael Whalen. Tristan Spug, and Michael Whalen. So congratulations to all of them. And I provided them their information this morning. We had a small reunion together and we'll do some press releases with them in the near future.
Who makes these decisions? I know it's based on a criteria.
So it's, yeah. It, it basically comes from the state.
The state, okay.
As a process of getting the proficient and exemplary on one each of the assessments. And the handout that you have, it's got a minimum score on the legacy exams, which is the new assessments. So you get an advanced or proficient, or you get an advanced and proficient with either combination of E L A math, science, or math, science.
Do you take this as juniors or seniors?
They, they take the assessment as a, as a sophomore. And as you know, the last assessments became an opt-in situation. So we have, we do have more students that are choosing to opt in for the, the, the upcoming assessment. And they'll be able to get that. I think these scholarships coming in at about seventeen hundred dollars for, for a year, nine hundred dollars for community college. So that's, you know, thirty-four hundred dollars a year times four years. It's, it's a nice amount of money if you decide to go to one of the state institutions. Doesn't hurt.
Do we ever get any information if these are actually used by our students or these? Because it's the higher level, I assume, like.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so no, it's, it's not. We actually, when you see the students that are, that we infer that they're using it because they're going to UMass. They, we infer they're going to UMass Boston, or UMass Amherst, or Bridgewater State, or any of the state institutions, or if they go to the community college, is X number of dollars off. So, you know, we don't.
I always just wondered, because I, I mean, I see some of our students going to these great universities where.
So what's, one of the things that's starting to happen that I actually learned today from Ms. Poole, our coordinator at the high school, is that we are starting to see a list of private schools that will use that Abigail and give them something. Not necessarily the full seventeen hundred, but give them something. And that list is, is provided for as well, right on, on the site.
Any other questions? The next agenda item is Mr. Dolman and vote on new courses for NHS. Mr. Dolman?
Yes, thank you very much. So we have five new courses to take a look at tonight. Just to give you a sense of the process to this point is that teachers about a month ago were provided with a proposal document. You see all of those proposal documents there in front of you, really just to kind of come up with a course description, talk about how it sort of addresses a need at the school, kind of lay out what the curriculum would essentially look like. They would connect it to some of our priorities, like project-based learning or workforce preparation. And then they would sort of give this to their department head to be signed. We discussed these at our academic coordinator meetings, providing feedback to the group and then also at site council to be approved before coming first to Dr. Bieta and then here to you. So it's been a long process for some of these courses. And I think if I remember correctly, we go one at a time through them and, and we vote on each one. Is that correct?
Well, you can vote as a bundle. Just in a vote of addition, or unless the committee says they want to hold on these.
All right. So I'll, I'll kind of run through all of them to give you kind of the highlights. There's a great deal more information about each of these courses there as well. So the first one up there is a computer science, a full-year exploring computer science course that would be very closely aligned with the state frameworks, especially when counting as a mathematics course. And this would actually kind of serve two purposes for us. One would be an alternate for senior year mathematics. So right now, some students who aren't interested in, in maybe the highest level maths of statistics and calculus would be taking a financial literacy course. This would be another option that's entirely project-based and based on computer science. Additionally, because it's a full-year course, we would eventually, once we bring in or do some other sort of background for potentially innovation pathways, those are things that are, in order to get the state designation, we need for full-year courses that are going to be aligned, basically for workforce preparation. Computer science often fits in either as a computer science on its own or potentially in a machining or a manufacturing track as well. So right now, the plan would offer it for mostly seniors or potentially juniors, if they like to, as a full-year mathematics course. And then down the line to use it as a entryway to our computer science or manufacturing pathway, once that's defined. The second one is brought through our music department. We have two music electives brought up here. The first is an introduction to piano. So much like our introductory guitar class, this would be an opportunity for students to learn a new instrument. There was a survey given at the beginning of the year, sort of asking students what they wanted to see out of their music department. And one of the things that was really identified was the ability to play piano. So this would address that desire. It would also be a situation similar to guitar, where some students who have an aptitude are coming in and working on basically improving their skills. So it would kind of be able to be tailored to whatever the skill level of the student would be. This, in, in order to kind of make room for this, there would be a basically a replacement of a music appreciation course, which is currently an elective. The, a lot of the same curriculum ideas of understanding music and also sort of appreciating. I'm going to embarrass myself here as not a music scholar here, but doing things like melody and, and those types of things would be built into this course. So some of the music appreciation curriculum would be brought into this class as well. But it would still be a project performance-based class and focused on learning that skill of that instrument. It does come with a budgetary cost we need to outlay in order to have the pianos for our students to do it. But, you know, pending that, we'd be able to offer this to our students. The second music elective here is Recording Arts Two. And this is a continuation of our very popular Recording Arts elective that we have right now. So students who have taken this, and as you can see, they record sound for video games, some live streaming, radio broadcasts, things like podcasts. They would be able to further develop this and maybe even, you know, really develop their own projects coming out of it. It would be the only prerequisite for it would to have taken Recording Arts Two, or sorry, Recording Arts One beforehand, which is where students pick up a lot of the really important skills of recording. Having observed some of these classes, a lot of technical work with different types of microphones, and then obviously how to mix and overlay sounds. So this would give students who have developed those basic skills in Recording Arts One, the ability to really delve deeply into it in Recording Arts Two. The fourth class that you have in there is an introductory, introduction to public speaking course that would be offered in our English department. So we used to have a public speaking course that was part of our senior seminars. And that was something when we sort of took a look at those and brought them back to our, our English four. We eliminated that as an elective. There's still quite a bit of public speaking within the English curriculum, but this would bring it or sort of pull it out to a particular sort of discrete semester elective. And the idea here obviously would be to provide a lot of coaching and practice with this very important skill. It would be devised around sort of four key types of speeches to be given throughout the course of the semester, really building towards those and then delivering that speech. It's something that we have two people on staff who have actually taught this both at the high school and also college level. So it'd be something that, that they would be very adept at doing. It's something that we find is, is a prerequisite a lot of the state colleges in order to pass a elective of, or not elective because it's required, but to pass a public speaking course in order to continue in their education in those colleges here as well. So this would be great preparation for that. And then the last course is one other continuation of one of our popular electives. Sorry. Oh, sorry. So the last one is Yoga Two course, Yoga and Mindfulness. So this is a continuation. We have a yoga and mindfulness course right now. That's one of the semester wellness electives. And this would be a continuation of that going into a lot deeper sort of understanding of yoga, a lot more complexity. It would actually be taught. We might have some cross-teaching from one of our math teachers, Cara Eminin, who's a very accomplished yoga instructor. So she would be building those skills for the students there. It would give the students who really enjoyed and found a lot of value in that yoga course, the ability to, to really go a lot deeper into it here. And as you can see, if you take a look through the proposal, once again, a lot more in-depth, different types of yoga as well as a lot of the mindfulness that goes along with it. So those were the new courses here proposed for twenty-two, twenty-three.
So would you say you got a couple of sequential situations, you know, bringing in the number two course, if you will, that's been successful with number one? Now we can go even, even deeper. You've got not the startup, but really the continuation also of classes that are core classes as well that, that really can count like, in this case, math or, or, or computer science, if you will. And then the interesting one, that one that actually has a significant cost, which would be the, the interest in piano, which is really the purchase of key keyboards, if you will. And I can tell you right now, that's not a deal breaker, number one. Number two, as a former principal that started a piano, intro to piano class, it's very, very popular. Kids are, are really into it and they also get to dive in deeper into the type of music that you can learn on a piano from classical to rock to whatever. So we're supporting these. I appreciate the work of all the staff, the academic coordinators, the staff that made the recommendations and the high school administration to bring it forward. It does require a vote of the committee.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's great. One that caught my attention was a computer science, not just because I work in tech, but math was by far my worst subject. So it would have been great to have an alternative. So I think that's, that's great for some of the students.
I, I agree. And I also want to say anything that Carrie brings up has always been a home run. So the fact that she, her name is on this means a lot. The arts are something that we all, I think, are very, wish we could have even more of. So that's certainly not a problem. Public speaking, if we've learned anything with Zoom meetings and everything, public speaking is pretty important right now. And yoga, I can't say, and I wish we had fifteen classes of yoga.
I think the other thing too, if I may, is as you know, we're working on this kind of career pathway concept, the innovation pathways, where we're really looking at manufacturing and computer science areas. We've got the, the college career rating is what we're looking at, the universities and colleges taking credits at the school, which will get a date at the end of this meeting. You're looking at alternative education. Just had a meeting today about really taking a look and giving kids options where or looking for that different pathway, if you will. And then the, the, the last one is the CTE, which is the career technical education. So having more of that. So those are four major attack plans, if you will, that we have in the district, specifically at Norton High School in order to provide those eighth graders some consideration of Norton High, but also wants students to there. What do you want to do when you grow up? And let them dabble in things and not just worry about graduation.
Any other questions, comments?
It's all good. You're happy to see it.
The more options for our students, the better.
I completely agree. So entertain a motion to vote on the proposed NHS courses for twenty-two, twenty-three as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Tashidi's yes as well. Thank you, Mr. Dolman.
Very much.
All right. Next item on our agenda is a train update with Mr. Wells.
Good evening, everyone. So we provided two documents for the update tonight. The first one is a one-page financial reconciliation. We're just a little under halfway through the billable for the project. But what is really important to note on this reconciliation is that Train was able to get all their purchase orders in early in the summer. So we're looking, we're not seeing an issue at this point with any of the market corrections we've seen over the past five months where prices are just going up on building materials. So it's looking really great that they're going to be able to hold the financials right where it is. Again, we still have a little bit to go through this. So, you know, things can pop up as we start taking equipment apart, but it's looking really good right now. The second item we provided for you is the timeline. The timeline is a list of the projects by school. And it shows how each one is going to space over the time that we have over the next nine months to a year. With everything being completed, it looks like close to the end of September. One thing to note on here is at the bottom of each of the listing is the solar. That seems to be the longest project item. And that's got a couple of reasons for it. One is the incentives and rebate applications take some time to put in. But second is we have to do an interconnection study with National Grid to make sure these substantial power plants can actually hook up to the grid and they won't cause a problem. So that takes a little bit more time to do that study, just to make sure that we're not going to blow any of their equipment.
Matt, I just have kind of a, it's probably a stupid question, but on that spreadsheet where it says third and fourth quarter, then starts again, the third and fourth is up this year, correct? Twenty-twenty-one?
On the, the timeline?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's the third and first, second, third quarter of, so yeah, fourth quarter is twenty-twenty-one. And then the first quarter is first, second, third is of twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, so like for the carport stuff, like you said, we've already started some things.
Yeah.
You don't see it. You guys are doing stuff. Okay. I just want to be clear for the update to PBC on Monday.
Yeah, that's definitely, that's, that's the longest one. It just has a lot of paperwork associated with it and a lot of studies that have to be done to make sure we're not going to blow anything on, on the National Grid side.
But, thank you.
And, and I think, Matt, it's important to say that, that also comes with a charge to us. So they get the study, we get the charge.
Yeah. There, there is an interconnectivity charge. We're, we're working with National Grid to understand what this is and what we're getting out of it. Right now, one of the schools, JCS is the only one we have the, the, the costing for. It's going to be ninety-eight hundred to do the interconnection study. We're trying to understand exactly what that is. I know it's, it's, it's a study to see the protection requirements, relay settings and the feet of loads that'll happen on the grid. But we're hoping to have some conversations with them and, and kind of make them understand, you know, it's, this, this isn't a, a solar farm that's being hooked up. This is a public school that's hooking up. So, you know, we, we found with other providers like Comcast, for example, we were able to have phone calls with them and make them understand that they shouldn't be passing those costs along to the, the, the public school consumer. So we're hoping we can have those conversations with National Grid and, and, and have some success with that.
So just, that was the first I'd heard, I've heard of that. So National Grid is trying to charge us?
Yes, I, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Eight hundred, Matt?
Ninety-eight hundred for the JCS, I think. That's the only one we have pricing for right now. So the other schools, we're going to see what the pricing comes in on that.
Matt, just, just to, to, to clarify or to just get to the point that Matt said earlier, the key here is that they're trying to safeguard their own equipment. I clearly get that, but this is not a solar farm, right? This is a, just a building, five of them, that are going to have some solar, but it's not a farm. I mean, we're not even close to a solar farm. So we're going, we're going to cost, right? So we're going to really push to see if we can get a better cost as a public institution, as a public nonprofit institution, to be quite honest.
So my other question, what, what parts of the schools are getting these? Like, where are these solar ports going? Do we ever get like a plan?
Yeah. And in the original plan that was provided, you'll see that we have, we have zero rooftops. We're going with the ports because it just makes sense to us to not put more weight on our schools. It's to say it that way, but really it's just not something we want to do. So if you think about the parking lot, like, like here, you're going to be looking at this back parking lot, if I remember correctly, here at the middle school. That's the only area. If you're at the high school, you're in that student parking lot area, which actually they just drilled. If you're at the JCS, you're on the right-hand side, looking at the building on the left. If you're at the Yell, you're in the front parking lot area. So the Yell is kind of to the left and it's right there with the parking. So it's, yeah, and then the Yell is behind, no, the, the Yell is the front area, parking area where the buses come in and so on and so forth. So it's not a lot, but it's enough solar energy to offset significant long-term costs. And at least for twenty years, we're looking at some, some good savings. And that doesn't include other ideas that we have around solar, i.e. the potential down, down the road connection to something like the athletic complex, where now the lights are being turned on at potentially no cost to anybody because you're utilizing the savings, the energy that's collected, for example, during evening hours, which is a, a small amount, but still happens. It's just the, the instruments that are used for that are costly right now. They're more costly than they were.
Yeah.
On this project. We're talking six figures. Somebody's got to make money.
But we are on budget, though.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
All right. Last thing is other topics.
Mr. Jim, and I have two topics on comment. Early college program, parent, student presentation is now set for January sixth at six-thirty. It will be soon because number one, not taking a chance with the weather and number two, we're getting more and more participation with so more people coming. That presentation will be for current sophomores, current juniors, and we're going to take a dabble on current seniors. If that may be one or two seniors who are participating in taking a class, we're expecting the courses to come to us from UMass Dartmouth and the entire UMass system. We have an upcoming meeting. The consortium now consists of Attleboro High School, Avon High School, Brockton High School, East Bridgewater High School, Hanover High School, Holbrook High School. Brockton High School, East Bridgewater High School, Hanover High School, Holbrook High School, Kent Philip Regional High School, Norton High School, Citroen High School, and Tonn High School. Um, it hits about forty-six thousand pre-K to twelve students and approximately fourteen thousand high school students over time currently that could potentially be involved. Remember, early college is about a cohort of high school students. It's now dual enrollment, where we're filling seats, which is also successful in some areas. Um, and we're also looking at the UMass Global. Uh, that is a brand-new online university that UMass just took over, purchased from a private um online global institution, I believe, out West. Um, and uh just recently, Marty, me and the president was in the commercial age, just actually, sorry, you might keep your eye out for it. Boston Architectural College is on board. Um, there are very specific courses. They are a four-year institution. Um, and we now also will be soon announcing private colleges that want to offer classes uh as well.
Just refresh my memory. This is not dual enrollment, so this is courses they take on their own, like an after-hours.
Yes.
They don't get like time off of school to do these. This is online class.
Well, there's options that can happen. For example, we can create that time during the day where they have quote like a tire, exactly. Um, this also is going to need our own staff to support it after school hours. For example, the biology teacher who will be compensated to work with students, in other words, providing our own staff opportunities to work with these students and be appropriately compensated, because sometimes these rumors start that, well, this is about cutting jobs or, you know, we're gonna lose. No, it's actually goes the other way. It actually is going to require more staffing, not less staffing. Um, because we're gonna need a place that for students to be. If you just send a kid home with an undergraduate class to do as a sophomore in high school, you gotta be really motivated. We need to have the students involved with other adults, um, not just the online uh opportunity. So that's what we're working on. There's currently a hundred and three students enrolled in that program, none from Norton, uh, because it was just so last minute for us. But um, they're having, um, they've had some um ghosting. I was told that's the phrase to use, some kids who just kind of don't show up anymore. Um, but there's still like like seven or eight kids at the school districts that are doing it. And uh a quote from the professors is, this is a lot of fun. These kids really like, they like working with each other. They like meeting other kids from other high schools, even though it's online. We're also working to do kind of college visits with that. The the professors would like to see, for example, the lab take place on campus, which would allow numerous kids from different institutions to come together. So kind of exciting. It's slow. There's a lot of bureaucracy in this, as you can imagine, but um, we're really um, we're really, really uh pushing it. And all of those communities, all eleven of us have signed on to that group, which consists of the superintendents of school, being kind of like a board of directors. And then each of us having our own building-level liaison, kind of is the contact. UMass Dartmouth's already committed a person in their office to the eleven high schools, which is a good thing, and then one person to call, one person to get in.
So can other, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Can other high schools get involved, or is it just the?
So the consortium, the consortium already has a request from at least one other high school that's come in. Um, so um, we are not here to stop it from happening, because it could be that that school brings in X number of students that actually creates another section or allows for the section to run, right? Because we need, we have to have minimum numbers. You can't, if you have six kids who want to take art and design, it's probably not gonna run with six. It's probably gonna need fifteen to run, so that so the the numbers help. They don't hurt.
Can you, can you provide us like a list of the classes offered?
Yeah, so we're waiting for that right now from one of the, so that some of the, so this term, we've had uh art, art and design was very popular. Um, that one was a Tuesday, Thursday, like two-thirty to four-thirty. Um, uh, the consortium also had an intro to political science, a biology, and a um and two, two different world languages, one of which we don't even offer. So there's that that opportunity as well as student, in that particular case, we offer Spanish. They were offering Spanish and Portuguese. Um, so.
Teach it?
I did not teach it. No, my Portuguese has become more of a kitchen Portuguese through the years.
Can you just clarify before we change the subject? Um, so students that will be um sort of allowed to do this option are income or like for this year, it would be the incoming sophomores or the current sophomores?
It's the current sophomores, current juniors and current seniors for this coming semester, and then for next year.
So potentially, they can take a course in the spring year?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we're really targeting, trying to give that option to our kids, recognizing that this is still very much a fluid situation. I.e., you know, our our kids want to take a class, and then it's Tuesdays and Thursdays from two-thirty to four-thirty, and they've got the other things going on. They may, they may not be able to take it this. So we're trying to be flexible with that. Um, but the idea is, we also know that um sometimes kids do a lot in the fall, unless in the spring and vice versa.
Is this live instruction as well?
This is live instruction. Yeah, this is professor live with the students. Um, the classes are running on on average sixty to ninety minutes. Either three days a week or twice, twice a week. The art design, like I said, was like, I think it was hour and forty-five minute blocks, if I remember correctly.
Dan, what is sort of the prerequisite? Like, is this um, any student who wants to do this, or is?
Yeah, so what we're trying to do is we're trying to find motivated students. Um, or students who may not be as motivated in their day-to-day, but this is something that interests them. So one of the things that the consortium is working on is what what is the 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 lineup of what this should look like for students and parents? And and then one of the questions that's come up is, is there a fee, right? Because the credits, it's about a hundred and sixty dollars a a credit. And we think that there should be some type of an attached fee to a student or a buy-in, if you will. Um, but we don't think it should be something that keeps a student from being able to take it. So maybe fifty bucks, a hundred bucks, something that gives someone the buy-in.
Yeah, because no fees, you have eight kids that didn't show up.
Right, exactly.
They don't have a.
Right, exactly. So um, we have not put together a list of prerequisites. We've kind of let it go fluid. In one of the schools that's uh that has um over fifty students involved, um, it's one of our city schools, uh city high schools. Um, they've left it pretty open, and they've had pretty significant success, because the students are really looking to get credits done and transfer to UMass. And and those are total transfers. Those are transfer credits.
Well, they accept, will the UMass system accept? Like, so if these credits are coming from Dartmouth, will Amherst and Boston?
Yep.
Will they all, so they're very transfer.
Very transferable within the state university system, and that's that's literally from the president's mouth to my ears. Um, and not only that, the the intention to this is it's a proof that a child, a student at who's seventeen, can do college work. Actually, maybe as young as fifty can do uh undergraduate introductory college uh classes.
Will guidance offer support to students? I sometimes think that um some students need a little invitation.
Yes, so one of the.
How involved will guidance be?
Yeah, so guidance will be, um, in different guidance councils will have the responsibility, but you're gonna be seeing a plan of an infrastructure change um in order to support the four pathway areas that we're talking about, because it is, it is a lot of work to organize anything around these pathways, number one. Number two, we want someone who is not only the salesman for the programs, but is also backing it up so that there is a counselor, but there's also someone else. There's also a potential teacher, as we talked about earlier, uh, one of our own, and not just a college professor. So um, yes, I I think the biggest issue is, um, one of the things I'm finding recently is we have been so inundated with technology as the one way to communicate, right? We had COVID. The only way we were really communicating all the time was emails, 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 email. Yeah, I think a lot of people have stopped reading emails, just based on some of the questions I get, you know, and so we have to try to find, um, you know, our communications office has to try to find a different way for us to try to get to that, um, different like little snippets of information. Hey, if interested in any of these, then here's your schedule instead of email after email after email. Because that's what's happening. And as a parent, I can tell you that, because I get those emails for sure.
Sadly, I think it's social media.
Yeah.
I think if you put something out, you know, on Facebook or Twitter, that people are scrolling and they see it, and then they'll they'll click.
Yes, and that's going to be part of our attack plan with the 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 different pathways.
Well, it's tough, too, having, you know, personally having kids in two schools. It's like, right, you know, it's a full-time job to read all the updates.
Correct, we agree. Uh, we're trying to figure out the technology way of linking that. Um, and we have, I have some thoughts on that, too. The second one, um, speaking of, um, I would like to tonight, uh, congratulate uh Karen, which is Director of Instructional Technology. She was uh selected as an award recipient for going above and beyond the program requirements for twenty-twenty-one was a challenging year, of course. And um, she uh has received um a donation uh to a nonprofit or an educational agency or institution. She would like for, I think Karen said, right, Karen, going to the technology department, I think is what she said. Um, for uh the donation, it comes in her name for two thousand five hundred dollars.
That's great, Karen.
Thank you, Karen, for um.
Congratulations.
For being part of the uh the Future Privacy Forum. Um, as she said to me a number of different times, she's incredible, incredibly competitive, so she wasn't just gonna let somebody else get the twenty-five hundred bucks.
I feel like we should have Karen in a picture with a like certificate or something. Yes. Oh, Karen.
Not tonight.
You're the best. Thank you.
So, thanks. Thank you, K W, for all of that. And uh, last but not least, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and a happy year to all of our students, as we do not have a committee meeting until January.
That's crazy. Be well, everyone.
Anything else? Mrs. Stern, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
All those favor, Mrs. Stern?
Yes, please.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sheed, yes. Have a good night. Have a safe holiday. Thank you, everyone.
Bye, Catherine.
Thank you.
Good night.
Hi.